Okay, well, it's nine o'clock, so we'll call this regular meeting of Commissioners Court of Titus County to order here on the eighth day of July 2024, nine o'clock. And if you'll rise, we'll have our prayer and our pledge of allegiance.
Dear heaven and Father, Lord, I just come to you, thank you, Lord, for all you do for us. Lord, I just ask you right now that you just go with us and give us wisdom of to do the things that we need to do for county. Lord, I just lift up those that are lost loved ones this week and ask you just to watch over and take care of them. Lord, we thank you for all you do for us and ask you just to go with us now and forgive before we feed you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Number one, public comments and requests for information on non agenda items in accordance with section 551.042, the Texas Open Meetings Act. For the ward. We did start the camera back there, didn't we? Does camera start?
Morning. As we all know, Hurricane Burl has made landfall this morning, the last night and this morning, moving north and northeast. Titus County would be in the path of this. Burl will be downgraded to a tropical storm. The National Weather Service predicting 30 to 40 mile an hour winds with 4 to 7 inches of water for Titus County. The main threat would be downed trees, power lines, and flooding. Governor Abbott's office has declared a state of disaster for 81 counties in Texas, and Titus is included in that. So I'm asking Judge Cooper to declare disaster for Titus County today. This will give us some time. He can declare disaster for seven days without having to have it voted on by the commissioners. So as the storm moves through tonight and into tomorrow morning, we'll be able to see what kind of damage we have. If we don't have much damage, we don't have a chance of making our threshold, then there's no need to have an emergency meeting by the commissioners. For the ISAT PSAT reporting, if we do any of it, I know some of you commissioners have, we trained on this a few weeks ago, we'll be using the ID on it. It will be 24-001607 tropical weather. That will be into this phase of this storm that's coming through. Anybody have any questions?
I just want to make a quick comment. Jerry, appreciate all that you've been posting about this storm coming this way. It's really helped a whole lot of people. I hope that they're very, very wrong about that, but it does show that it's going to be a lot of high winds. We've already had a lot of trees down with the commissioners, and they're still trying to get some of those up. We've got road work to do, but the storm, keeping people safe during the storm is going to be a main priority. And I will be signing that disaster later on in case we do need it to go into effect. And hopefully, we're preparing just in case, and we hope that we don't need it. But I appreciate you, all you've been doing.
Well, our threshold is 147,000, and with the last storm that come through on April 26th, with movie cast is 329,000, they submitted in, we well met our threshold. So we're still working on that, trying to get it closed out, which that'll go on for several more months. But since this is a new one coming up, we need to be more prepared on this one to see where we're at going forward.
You'll be communicating, if we do have this, you'll be communicating with all the commissioners and whatnot, excuse me, communications with them. Not that they don't already know it, but if it is flooding, make sure that we've got that documented on our roads, pictures if you've got them and stuff, because that'll go into that figure as well on flooded roads.
Because anything we submit, we have to have documentation on it. Because when FEMA comes out two, three months from now, and they sit down and say, okay, you put in this $10,000 here, we've got to have where that money went. Because if we can't prove nothing, then they're just going to throw it out. So we've got to have the documentation, van hours, fuel, trucks, tractors. Put all of y'all a packet in your boxes in or have a list of chainsaws and everything else you can follow. So anyway, hopefully, everything works out good tonight. We'll know more tomorrow morning, but appreciate y'all.
Pray God takes care of us and our safety for sure. Any other comments? All right. Number two, considering possibly approved the minutes from the June 24th, 2024 special meeting of the Commissioners Court.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve those special meeting minutes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That'll carry unanimously. Number three, presentation by Mr. and Mrs. Tigert concerning a drainage issue in Precinct Four with maybe possible action. Ms. Tigert, if you'd like, you're probably going to have to pull that down. Jerry's quite a bit taller than you, but. There you go.
Okay. So I've made myself some notes. First of all, I want to thank y'all for everything that y'all do in taking care of our roads, and thanks for whenever we've needed something, y'all always come out, and I appreciate it. So we have a little bit of a flooding issue at the crossroad of 3150 and 3160. A new ditch has been installed, which definitely helps the water flow down our side, but it's created a flooding problem on 3160. This is near the 80 acres area on back through there. So we've proposed some things that would help, and some of it's been done, but a little bit more action I think needs to be done. So I've got dates and times of all kinds of things. I don't know if y'all need all of that, but a large ditch was installed on our part of the road that's 18 inches in diameter. And then, so the water flows are really good, but the other side of the road, the plan was, I drew a little picture of a little OCD about things. So I drew a picture and a plan out, and I showed where three ditches need to be installed, minimum of two. And the one across the other road had been caved in and not used forever. And so that was not done that day. And I was told by a neighbor, I mean, that was in the plan, I thought. And so a neighbor said that Mr. Carlisle came down to that area and talked to the crew, and that ditch was never done at that time, anyway. So then later on, and the crew told later on my husband Robbie that they knew the culvert was needed, but it wasn't going to happen. So that's, it did happen. So due to all the water flowing through 18 inch culvert down our ditch, much more erosion has taken place, even at a faster rate, has caused more flooding down 3160 near Paula Reynolds McCall's house. It washed out our 15 inch culvert to the pasture three times. We were told that our choice of ditch size, culvert size, was too small. On April 20th, there was lots of rain. I sent pictures of flooding and problems to Mr. Parker, asking him to please put in a culvert on Mr. Carlisle's side. I didn't really care what Carlisle said. We own six houses and, you know, pay our taxes, and we would like our erosion to stop. So they did bring in a lot of clay to fill in our ditch. That didn't last because we've had water, 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 so it just turned the road red, basically, from the red clay. So that was a waste of time and money. Later, Mr. Parker did come and install a culvert on Carlisle's side. However, it's a 15 inch culvert, which is the same size as mine, and we were told that it wasn't big enough. So too small, I believe, because the one going to our road is 18 inches, this one was 15 inches. And it's a clear 4 to 5 inches higher than our culvert, so water would literally have to magically leap up into the culvert for it to flow. So I don't know if that was an accident, or if it was just to appease Mr. Carlisle, but it was ineffective. Let's see. I have another page here. So also, where the culvert, the 15 inch culvert, that would possibly someday divert water to Carlisle's side, the ditch on the other side was very tiny, looked like it had been scooped out by spore compared to the other side, which was really a ditch. So there needs to be a ditch all the way down 3155 from that corner at 3155, 3160, all the way to Mr. Carlisle's house. The sheriff had been called, actually, not by us, but the sheriff had been called out about the problem, and, well, maybe not the sheriff, but I believe it was Tim Ingram. And he spent a lengthy amount of time walking and talking, looking at the lay of the land. He was with my husband, and he agreed that something needed to be done, that one ditch 18 inches down our side was causing a flooding problem. And so to correct the problem, I believe that the 15 inch ditch culvert needs to be replaced by 18 inch, or at least to the minimum, you know, benefit, but at least to lower it down so that the water could possibly flow through it. And then on the other side of it, it can't be higher than what the other side is. It has to create a flow pattern. And right now, the water would go through the ditch, the culvert, but then it would just kind of puddle up and literally come back and go down our side. So there's no way that water gets down Carlisle's side. He was happy out mowing his ditch the other day. I would like to mow my ditch, but I understand that water flow has to happen. And so regardless of happy ditch owners, it needs to be done. So if, final statement here, if the water was diverted to Carlisle's side and also to Doug Reynolds's side, which is just across the road from us, it would solve my ditch problem and would solve the flooding over County Road 3160. This in turn would save the need for future repairs on that road and wasted time. It would solve that problem and taxpayers' money. So if that was done, I think it would help the road problem.
This here, 3160, with the water over it?
Yes, that's the flooding problem. And you can see that on Mr. Reynolds's side, there is no ditch. They just get to drive up and load their cows and everything, which that'd be great, but.
And is this here, you may not conceive from that, is this here where you're talking about the two culverts being one higher than the other? But that's where you're saying it's higher?
So in a sense, one thing real quickly, just to talk about what she went through. She went through all the stuff that we've asked and requested, but this is a four-way intersection. And when you look at that intersection, the county road one this way, county road one this way, there is, every time it rains, just within the past year, they dug a ditch down the one side of the road. Within one year, where the erosion is going, it's close to four feet deep already. It's washing roots up. You've got big trees that are, we're really concerned about the trees falling. On the other side of the road, to the west, and then on the other side of the road here, there's absolutely zero, you know, it's grass, you can just, you can mow with your zero turns. So that's the concern is, within another year, it's going to continue washing the road out. And not only is the ditch getting deeper and concerned of the trees, you go down another 200 meters, it's starting to push up big chunks of the county road. So within another year, timeline at minimum, it's going to wash all kinds of stuff out. And then it's going to be taxpayer money, it's going to be the ditch, it's going to be a bigger concern when there's actually zero erosion in all of the directions.
Jimmy, do you want to have any comments with them?
Go ahead, you have something, Tammy.
Oh, I was going to say, Mr. Carlisle gets mad at me, but yesterday, I went and got in the ditch, which used to, I could just step over it. Anyway, I got down into our ditch that's been eroded. I gathered the chunks of concrete and things that I've been trying to gather to, like, prevent our dirt from eroding, and I shoved it up into the culvert on our end to tread it, because I know today the flood's coming, you know, so I know that it's going to, like, literally, every time it starts to rain, I'm like, oh no, my trees and our road. And so I have, I don't want to get in trouble for it, but anyway, I shoved a buttload of, I shouldn't say that, a lot, a lot of concrete up on that end on our side to try to prevent or slow down the water in hopes that maybe it would raise the water level on the other side, so maybe that water could jump into his ditch, but then again, it has nowhere to go.
Lady's definitely concerned.
Yeah, y'all can come down and see it, it's going to be a show.
Hopefully, we're going to miss that today. Jimmy, I'm the judge, I don't do their roads, and I don't do their culverts and stuff. Is there any, what they're talking about there, is there any way to get that 3160 and 3155 to get those on the same level? I don't know, I haven't seen them.
Yeah, that culvert did, it was, it is a little higher than other, but the road coming off 3160, it dead ends on the west end, and the water comes down both, well, actually both sides, but the south side of it, where it comes down, it goes into, that was what we've been trying to catch, a lot of the water coming off of it. And of course, we know that water travels in the, where there's a leak system. That 15 inch, that road, 3160, the road itself is a little higher than 3155, so you really can't put a bigger culvert in there in order to alleviate that. So I can't go back out there.
Can you go lower with either? I'm just asking.
Yes, I think we can go a little lower with it. There's two culverts on down 3155 down there that really need to be opened up to them to carry it across the road. That's where a lot of the water's going, but a lot of the water is not even going, or I say a lot of it, some of the water is not even going through the culvert, it's coming down the ditch in front of the Tiger's house and cutting the corner right there at the end of the culvert. And that's where a lot of the water's coming from, especially on these big drains. And when we have these gully washers, I call them, it's hard to, you know, make it go any certain direction because of that. So, because there's so much going at one time. Just a regular rain, it's not as bad, you know, as it is when we get these gully washers, so.
And as part of where that intersection is, and you're correct, it's a little higher. And when that main culvert, the 18 inch culvert was put in, I understand that the water's going to go in a certain direction, but it has been directed that way. And I've got clear video showing that anytime it rains, that if it was opened up, if there used to be culverts there, and that's what they're designed for, to allow it, because that road's a little higher, to allow it just to flow this direction, and this direction, and this direction, it would just flow its own different, you know, ways, that's the way it's want to go. But now with that elevation and with that culvert, putting that in there, it's 100% directed one way. And that 100% direction coming out of that one culvert, when just even light rains, it's like a, it's shooting out, you know, and like I said, you can step 10 feet over the other way, there's no water, because all of it comes out there, and it's like a jet stream. And that's what's really causing the erosion, is that forcing it to go down one direction versus allowing it to go three different directions.
Also, the water coming down from the whole entire 80 acres across from our house, I'd asked Mr. Parker to dig the ditch on Carlisle's side, and he did, and it's really deep and great and effective, but yeah, the reason was because our road 3155, prior to that, had been being washed out and into our yard, basically. And so by him doing that ditch, solved, fixed that road problem, okay? There's been very little need for patches on that road. I studied topography, I'm an environmental teacher, environmental science teacher and a geologist, so I understand the water flow and the lay of the land. I teach topography. So if it all had been done at once, I actually drew a picture at that same time that that ditch was dug out, and if all three ditches had been put in at the same time, then we wouldn't have the erosion that we have. So I understand there's a lot of water flow, but I understand that Mr. Carlisle's ditch could be dug out on his house side, and it would solve the problem. Like, there's no culvert at all at his little broken down house on the corner that's fallen down, no ditch, it's filled in completely. It is flat and pretty and easy to mow, but it needs to have a culvert. It needs a culvert. If it was dug out, it would work, I promise you.
One of the reasons we hadn't got back over and done that is because of the storm. We've been picking up trees and still do not have them picked up, all of them picked up from April deal.
I understand. I've been asking since last November.
We, that's one reason we hadn't got back over and done anything else on that. I wish we could have done something before this coming in now supposedly, but like I say, we've been picking up trees and hopefully we can get back on it.
Okay, I appreciate it.
And Jimmy, we do appreciate everything you've done, because you always have connected with us on that, and we had to get to this point as well, but it has been, you know, since we've started the process of just requesting and asking, it's been over 14 months. And I think part of it was the concern that really, you know, that when we started getting into it and we didn't, wasn't seeing the results, is when we actually saw the county crew out there, and the crew was very open and said, it's not going to happen. Said, there's certain people down the road that's already had the conversations, said that you can find it, but it's not going to happen. Apparently, they had been having discussions, and we were like, well, is this going to work or not, or are we just getting?
Well, I mean, the guys, I mean, they out there doing, you know, doing their job, and they hadn't been told that it wasn't going to happen, but, and I don't know why they, you know, would have said that, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure either, it was just concern that that's, you know, the workers that are out there every day.
You think we can maybe try to get those on a different level and then check those ditches, and if y'all check back with us, like I said, I'm not on that road very often, but I'll try to drive out there at some point. Hopefully, it won't be doing too much damage, and as soon as, we hopefully don't get any wind blowing and stuff like, get the trees up, maybe Jimmy and his crew can get a little relief there for you. And if you'll report back to us, like I said, you're there every day and see it every day, if you'll let us kind of know, we'll be, Jimmy seems to be wanting to work with you on that and get you some solutions there and help the taxpayers as well as not having to repair that road down the road down the future.
The road, and we've got several trees that sound the same thing, these storms come through, sooner or later, some roots are going to get used up.
We may lose a few in this storm, hopefully not, but like I said, we appreciate you coming and bringing this to the court's attention, and if you'll let us know the process, and we'll keep us updated, please. Number four, presentation by McKinstry on strategic planning for Titus County infrastructure and facility improvements with possible action. Ryan, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge Cooper. Pleasure to be here with you this morning. My name is Ryan Jewell, I am with McKinstry. It was recommended from Lone Star Consulting that we come and present to you today, tell you a little bit about McKinstry, who we are, what we do, and the value that we provide. We've worked with Lone Star Consulting, and we partnered with them on numerous projects with numerous counties, really helping to, yes, sir.
Not to interrupt you, Ryan, but the Lone Star Strategies, that's our grant writing people, Miss Avett, so that we're all on the same page, and those that are listening on TV know who that is, but that's our grant writers.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Judge Cooper. Yeah, and so we've partnered with them to help get the necessary information that they need to submit grant applications, as well as wrap those packages up. So everything from preliminary costs and preliminary design, all the way to full design documents, full costing documents that are needed to oftentimes achieve those grants. So we've worked with them on numerous projects, and really just wanted to tell you a little bit about who we are. Feel free at any time to jump in with any questions that you may have. Our goal is to really outline how we can help you with some long-term strategic capital planning, and our process, which we work through the progressive design-build process, which is a little bit different than the process that you normally go through, which is design, bid, build. The reason that we go through a little bit of a different process is because of the opportunity that we've seen in the market. A lot of what we see is about a 50% waste of energy cost in buildings. We also see about a 50% loss of labor in construction projects as well. So we believe that there's a huge opportunity, and that our process really allows us to capture that waste and turn that into more effective buildings and more effective outcomes. We know that counties have a lot of different focuses, and one of them is not always buildings. Buildings, infrastructure is sometimes looked at as a liability, we've got to replace this roof, we've got to replace this A-trac unit, we have to upgrade our plumbing, but it's not really looked at as an asset. And that's what we hope to do, is help shift the lens of how you view your buildings, and how you can turn them from a liability into an asset, maybe from an outcome standpoint, from the community use standpoint, maybe looking at shifting budgets and how you can be more effective with those budgets, or how you can even potentially turn a building into a revenue stream for the county. So all of those things we take into consideration as we go through our planning process with you. We do know that typically, when you're looking at building a building, the initial cost is about a third of the operational and management cost of that building. So if you build a brand-new facility, it costs you $2 million bucks, you're probably looking somewhere north of $6 million over the life of that building to fully operate and manage that building. So for us, it's really not just about the initial build cost, but it's really about how we take into consideration the total life of how that building is going to be used, and how it can be used most effectively, and then also planning for replacements and upgrades along the way. As we know, county buildings are typically occupied for numerous years, 40, 50, 100 years in some cases, or more. And so how we're able to plan for that long-term is really important when it comes to that operations and management piece of your buildings. So we have an integrated design process, integrated delivery process, really bringing everything under one umbrella, kind of going back to how I mentioned, a design, bid, build. Typically, through a project, you would have somebody come out, design the project, give you a price, and then you would have somebody else come in and bid on that, and then build that process. For us, we bring everything under one umbrella. We will work with local partners as much as possible to help deliver on that project. We don't actually have anybody in-house that is building walls, turning wrenches, so to speak. We want to work with local communities and local partners to help achieve our projects. What we do have in-house is a technical services team that really can go through and deep-dive into your buildings, give you numbers on how you're going to replace equipment, prioritize that replacement, what it's going to cost, and when that needs to be done. We also, on the back end, have a team that can actively monitor your operations, how those buildings are performing, what maintenance needs to be done, what service needs to be done, when it needs to be done, as well as an energy management component that can really help you make sure you're staying on task with those buildings. Oftentimes, it's easy to set it and forget it, but we have a team that can help monitor and keep that building continuously running at its optimal performance. That goes along with all of our projects. You know, our tagline is "For the Life of Your Building," so we're really looking not just at the front, but all the way through, again, all the way through the process of that building, whether it's new construction or current infrastructure, how we can outline that to be the best building possible for the county. Again, through our design-build method, one of the, there's a couple of really attractive benefits to this process, and really the ultimate goal is to shed the risk off of our clients and back onto McKinstry. A lot of times in the projects, as I mentioned, you go out, you hire a designer, then you hire a contractor, then you hire somebody to come commission it, all of that falls on us. So it's one single point of accountability through the procurement method, as well as through the entire process. So there's local government code, 262, in Texas, that allows you to procure a design-built contractor who can come in and do the design, do the architecture, as well as the planning for that building, construct the building, commission the building, and get that building into sustainable operations. So all of that is a single source, takes a lot of the risk off of you, and a lot of the risk of having finger pointing going on between designer, contractor, installer, commissioning agent, all of those different entities that really get brought into the process. We see through our projects, generally, it's about a 33% quicker delivery time, so we're able to drop that delivery time, obviously saving money. We're also able to deliver a lower unit cost through our process. You don't have as much profit overhead markup in each individual subcontractor as opposed to one single point of accountability. And then probably the biggest piece is the change order piece. So generally, what we get complaints from our clients about is they have a project that's going on, they expect it to be one price, the builder comes in and finds out that they missed something, or something got skipped, and they get hit with a change order for that project. Through our process, all of that is identified upfront. That's what makes our partnership with Lone Star Consulting so valuable, is because we can go to them and give them a preliminary design and cost. Once we give them our number, we are not allowed to change that number unless it's owner-directed, unless you come in and say, hey, we actually want to add this, or we want to add that. That would be the only time we would have a change order. But that's where we are really valuable to our clients, because once you get a price, you can budget for that price, and you can know that you're going to get the outcomes that were agreed upon in the initial phase, really, to deliver on that project. So those are really the main points for design-build and our strategic planning. Obviously, we want to be a partner to you any way that we can. And really, our partnerships are very valuable for the long-term aspect, just like you would with anybody else. Again, we always try to work with local subcontractors, local vendors, as much as possible, to really keep that project as local as possible to the community. We also have an internal funding team, so outside of grants with Lone Star Consulting, we have a team that will be looking for any other ways that we can fund projects, whether that's through rebates, energy savings, different financing methods, all of those things that can come into account and can really help drive that process. So it's not just about finding the money, but it's also about how we can effectively spend that money to stretch those dollars as far as possible in each and every one of your projects. So we oftentimes see cities and counties that have no long-term plan. Ultimately, that's the first step. Ultimately, that's the first step and most important into identifying where you, where you are now, and then ultimately where you want to be down the road. So that's how McKinstry can help and, and where we provide the most value. I've got some information that I'll hand out to y'all, just so you can go through who we are in a little more detail, a little bit more about our company. We are regionally headquartered in Dallas. We have offices in Austin, Houston, San Antonio, but our regional headquarters is in, is in Dallas. So, any, any questions?
The one thing I'd like you to kind of talk about and, and the reason that, that you're here today is to kind of go over that, and we do want a plan moving forward with the county. Right now, we don't have, don't have a plan as far as our buildings, roofs and things of that nature. Where this all started was with us looking at air conditioners and some of that problem. We had a problem this morning across the street with one. His company has narrowed it down to about six to 10 units that, that's got to have something done quickly, but the problem with that is the, the government involved as far as the SEER ratings and things, as far as being able to get air conditioners and stuff of that matter. So we are kind of in a, I guess, a holding pattern until we can get some more answers on that. But the, the beauty that I do like of it, once, once Ryan and them do get us a figure, that's their problem. If it's over that problem, over that figure, that's on them, it's, it's not on the county at, at all. So when they bring us that it's going, let's say five, 10 units, whatever we've got to replace at this moment, that price is set. And it's not, "Oh, well, sorry, the, the units went up, we got to go up some more on y'all." And the, the other good thing that, that I liked about it, and did you say it was 62 with, with the Texas?
Yep, local government code 262 for procurement.
262, and that takes a lot of the headache and all that, with them being able to, to go through all those processes for us, help us get those bids and, and bring those to us and be able to complete the job from start to finish, so.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you for pointing that out, Judge Cooper. Our goal is never to have a single change order come across your desk during our projects. Again, only if it's owner-directed. If we miss something, you know, if we fail to design to a certain standard, we cover the cost of that, that's on us. And that's really, again, allows us to deliver quicker because our team is thinking two or three steps ahead and not waiting for those problems to arise. So that's where we're able to really mitigate those issues.
Any of y'all got any questions for him on that? Like I said, when, when this first started, I didn't even know they did all that they do. When we first come into office, we were, we were changing the air conditioner, it seemed about every week when I came into office. That has kind of slowed down a little bit. They do have us a plan on that, but we, we have roof problems in the, in our, in our buildings. Our buildings are getting older and stuff, and once we, we do get this down the road a little bit further, I'd like to try to figure out something with him and Lone Star as far as our grants and stuff to upgrade our buildings and for us to have a plan on them with our roofs and stuff. When we start seeing water run down the, the inside, it's too late because it's going to cost us extra money down the road. And Sheriff Bragg is, is here today and we're working with a, with a roof over there for the new, for the sheriff's department. So we want to do some preventative to save us some money, and I know it's going to cost some money, but it can save us some money as well.
Absolutely, yeah, and we, we generally see emergency repair and replacement costs between four and six times more, not taking into account any shutdown time, anything like that. So being proactive is really important. Just give yourself a, a plan. It, you know, whatever you set out today is not always going to be what it is tomorrow, but if you have a, a better idea, it can help long-term, you know. You can make decisions on a much quicker basis if you have the information to be able to, to make those decisions.
Plus you got a plan, I mean, and then you can kind of budget along the way for that each year and, and take care of projects along the way and not, not be hit all in the face with it at one time.
Absolutely.
Hopefully, we'll be working, working alongside y'all soon, so.
Excellent. I'll, I'll hand you each a presentation here. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Joyce, I'm, I'm.
All right.
I can send more.
Number five, on the agenda, considering possibly approve the inter-local agreement between Camp County and Titus County regarding the funding office of the district attorney. Mr. Coburn's been helping me with this as far as getting it legally done. This is something that we signed last year with Camp County. We had a little discrepancy there for a while, and me and Judge Mason sit down, got that all worked out. It is on the basis, it goes on the population, and that goes with Titus County paying for 71.5% of, of the DA's office over there, and Camp County is at 28.5. Also, the beauty of this deal is with Judge Mason and them, if there's any addition to that budget, any new things coming in, it's just like with us, they have to come to us, present us with that, and we vote on that, whether we want to move forward with that, and so does Camp County, so they don't get hit with a bill at the end of the year where, where they didn't know something was coming in, and we're not going to get hit with extra costs that we didn't know was coming in. So spoke with Judge Mason, we've got this all typed up and, and ready to go. Mr. Coburn has looked over it, and I'm assuming he feels good with it as well. Like I said, we've got a good relationship with Camp County now that we do have a contract and it's working a whole lot better. Everything gets paid on time and, and they've been, been good to work with us, and so it's, it's been a lot smoother with us having this contract, so. Any questions that y'all might have on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve the inter-local agreement between Camp County and Titus County for, for funding of the district attorneys, and seconded by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carry unanimously. Number six, considering possibly approve the final plat of the Johnson-Kano subdivision located on 1725 and Farmer Market Road 1402. Mr. Kano was here today.
He was.
There he is.
He's still back.
I may have to take my glasses off. Do you have anything? It's all been approved. Mr. Bane has sent me a copy of it and all. Any questions or anything that, concerns that you have for the Commissioners? Jeff, that'll be out in your precinct?
Yeah, I've talked to Sergeant Bane about it, he's good with it, and I've looked at it, and I'm good with it as well, so.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve. Got a motion made by Commissioner Parchman to approve the plat for the Johnson-Kano subdivision on 1730, on 1725 and 1402.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carry unanimously. Number seven, considering possibly increase in pay rates in certain departments in attempt to equalize compensation as a result of SB 22 funding. This has been a, a long process. Once we did get the funding from the SB 22, it got a lot of, a lot of salaries up for, for different offices, and so I got to looking at, at our salaries across the board with our help here, and we had some, some very low pay in positions with this SB 22. That took care of those, but I feel like before the raises, if we can put these into effect, it'll bring those all up to, to an equal amount. I work with Marcus across the street there with his department, he feels comfortable with the changes for that. I didn't get to work with Melissa, but after I got all the numbers together, she was okay with her numbers because of a conflict of interest there maybe, but I can handle that. And so I did hers and spoke with the JPs, spoke with Ms. Lynette, and spoke with our treasurer, Ms. Applewhite. It's going to cost the county about $20,680, something like that, is that, that correct, for the, for the remainder of the year in a amended budget? I feel it's necessary to get these to that stage, and then if we are able to do the 5% COLA later on, I think this will help all our employees. The thing is, you can go and work at a, a small McDonald's, things of that nature, and be making more than what our employees are making, and that is sad. I do realize it's taxpayer dollar and we're very frugal with that, but if we can take care of our employees, keep them here, working with the county, you know, I think it'll be a big advantage to Titus County. And also, if, if we do lose employees and have to get another one, I just don't feel like that our salaries are comparable to, are enough to get, get good quality workers here. And when we have turnover, then it gets into training them, downtime and things of that nature. So with all that, I would like to see that move forward.
I'll make a motion to approve the pay rates.
We've got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve those pay rate increases for the departments.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor? All those opposed? That'll carry unanimously. Number eight, approve all in written reports of the county officials.
Make a motion to approve the reports.
We got a motion made by Commissioner Parchman to approve those reports.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor? All those opposed? That'll carry unanimously. Number 11, sign pay orders and approve payments.
Make a motion to approve deals.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parker to pay the orders and approve payments.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor? All those opposed? Number 12, closing comments. Jeff, you have anything?
No. Just, everybody watch the weather and don't get caught up in it.
I'd like to, first of all, thank everybody for helping with Talco, getting it all set up, and they really, they were really appreciated of it, and I appreciate everybody's help and it looks good over there, and I thank everybody for getting involved.
Jim?
I don't have anything.
I'd like to go ahead and, and comment there as well with Dana. I appreciate all the Commissioners. I know that, that was in his precinct, but they're not necessarily his roads, they're Talco roads, but if you didn't get over there to see the wall, you missed an amazing deal, and, and I even went over there one night after the ceremonies and was there at night. It was open 24 hours a day, and to see it at night all lit up and the flame going, it, it was pretty special. And to, to get to walk up with the Hockaday's, to put their memorial wreath on Mr. Hockaday's brother, and all those that were there, those that had served for our country, those that had been Vietnam veterans, they weren't treated, in my opinion, properly when they got home. If it wasn't for men like them, we couldn't, couldn't sit in court today and, and have our freedoms that we have, and I think that's very special. And for Talco, the smallest town to ever, ever receive the memorial wall, I think that's a big, big statement for us, and the roads did look well over there, and I got a whole lot of comments on them, and I didn't do the work, y'all's hands and y'all did the work, and, but I do appreciate it, and they're very appreciative there in Talco. In closing, Jerry Ward will keep us updated on our emergency plans if, if the storms do come, and hopefully they will not be as bad as they say, but we do need to do preventative measures to be ready for that, and we appreciate all your hard work with that, Jerry. We appreciate you posting and keeping everybody informed. If you're, if you're not a member of, of Jerry's website, the Titus County Emergency Deal, sign up, he gives good information. If trees and stuff do go down, you can get hold of our Commissioners and our EMC, and we'll communicate that, trying to get the power and trees and stuff off the roads and hopefully, hopefully we're planning for something that doesn't get to Titus County, but if it does, we're going to be ready, so. With that, we do appreciate you, Jerry, for, for your hard work, and I appreciate y'all gentlemen getting those roads taken care of there at Talco. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor? All those opposed?